Okay, we're gonna call to order the February 22nd meeting of 2024. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilman Asbill is absent. Councilman Buddy?
Present.
Councilman Chatelain?
Present.
Councilman Johnston?
Present.
Councilman Ricks is absent. Mayor Baudier?
Present.
Police Chief Lapri?
Present.
Fire Chief St. Sears absent. Finance Director Todd Turnion?
Present.
City Attorney Scott Stansberry?
Present.
Myself, Municipal Clerk Carrie Eustace is present. Mayor's announcements.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Chatelain to amend the agenda to add before Madam Announcements address the council. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Buddy, all in favor to amend the agenda? Yay.
Yay.
Five yays, zero nays, Madam Clerk?
Three yays.
I'm sorry, three yays, three yays, two absences. I'm meant to get used to that tonight. Three yays, two absences. We will now take on, address the council. Sir, please state your name and put your name and address.
Richard Spike Kidock, 43 Berkeley Avenue, Harrahann. I've come here tonight to correct some inaccuracies spoken about the Harrahann Senior Center Incorporated. I gave y'all a package already. Not addressing all of it, it's just there for y'all to see. It's gonna hit some points. They wanted to know who owned the property at Harrahann Senior Center. The city owns it. The city of Harrahann controls it. HSC Incorporated, Harrahann Senior Center Incorporated has eight board members. I pass this out to y'all. So with them saying they didn't have anybody on it but me, well, that was in the beginning. At the end of it, they had three others on it. But there's eight people on it. And Paul Duley has the ones that are passed away and the ones that need to go on it. He's supposed to be changing it, okay? The board meets monthly, and since all of this has been going on at the senior center, it's almost weekly. The Harrahann Senior Center Board has reviewed and approved all financial statements. The mayor has received the financial statements from Sandy Lamoin. It was stated that something was wrong accusing this organization of wrongdoing. Well, here's the Harrahann Senior Center Secretary of State right here. It's all in y'all's package. It lists eight members on it. The LLC they're talking about is my business, one of my businesses that only has me because it's my business. And the rest of the package is just different stuff for y'all to read, and you can do it. I don't want to take too much time up, we starting late anyway. Sandy's got something to say, but she's at the senior center trying to clean up because we have it rented, so. But I would like to let any board members that would like to say something come up here right now and say it, if it's okay. And by the way, thank y'all.
Good evening, Mayor, Chief, Council. Tim Walker, I'm the Vice President of Harrahann Senior Center Incorporated. Some comments were made at the last meeting about our finances. The lady that spoke, Mr. Kidock and myself, had met with in the past and give her financial information that she requested. Secondly, she indicated things were incorrect. Well, everything's done by the book. Before we have a checking account, everything that we receive goes in the checking account. All payouts are made with two signatures on the checking account and documentation. So, any questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you.
I'm Bernie Del Home, Secretary of the HSC Incorporated. As stated at the last council meeting in January by a person who I will not mention by name, that Bernie does all the dirty work for Spike and Tim. I'm offended greatly by that remark. Also, I know for a fact that the same person stated that she has never seen any financial statements for HSC Incorporated. She was shown these statements by Ann Mooney, and I witnessed that. Plus, Spike and Tim took her to Subway to eat and was shown those statements again. On another note, I don't understand why another bathroom has to be added to Adelaide's just for the volunteers in Adelaide's to use. I'm a member of the senior center and don't know why I can't use the same restrooms provided for the other seniors. I hope that I will not be told in the future that I can't come to a function at the senior center because I'm with HSC Incorporated. Plus, when Adelaide's moved into the front of the building, Spike hired workers to paint the walls, and he paid for the paint. Plus, he never turned in the bills for the paint and the labor. He always pays for something and never gets reimbursed. Thank you.
What's this name? You wanna come, you wanna come start? You wanna talk about the music first? Address the councils open, yeah.
Anybody else who wants to address the councils?
Yeah, address the councils now. Yeah, we moved it to the front of the meeting.
He's in new business.
Oh, he's in new, you in new business?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you in new business? Okay, just making sure.
Sorry, I'm short. Hi, I am Britt Baudier. If I need to state my address, 159 Elaine. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me tonight. I wanted to let the citizens of Harrahann know that I am running for the Republican Jefferson Parish Executive Committee and the Republican State Central Committee as a representative of Harrahann. And I'm here tonight just to ask you guys for your vote and support on March 23rd. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else like to address the council? We'll now close, address the council, and return back to the formality of the meeting. Mayor's announcements. We have a proclamation here for Mr. Glenn Landry, who was served on the Civil Service Board. Whereas Mr. Glenn Landry, M.D., voluntarily served on the Harrahann Civil Service Board for 10 years. And whereas Mr. Glenn Landry, M.D., acting on behalf of the city and the city council as a civil service board members, vice chair, helped the city navigate through multiple critical challenges. And whereas Mr. Glenn Landry, M.D., have also spent 20 years on serving, on serving the community as a medical professional. And now therefore, I, Timothy Baudier, Mayor of the city of Harrahann, are proud to recognize and honor and thank you very much for your outstanding dedication and service to our city. Thank you very much, Mr. Glenn, because he will, he will no longer be serving on a civil service board in the council, we'll be replacing him. But thank you so much for your service. It's service like that is what makes our small town go, and that service is completely voluntary. So thank you very much, and he will be, he will be dearly missed.
Will you continue on, may I like to respond to the address the council early, if you don't mind?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm very active at the senior center, and I've been very involved at the senior center for over 30 years. I served on the Harrahann Committee since 1992 until when Al Robishow took over the senior center. He abolished all the community centers, boards, in, I think, 12 years ago, 13 years ago when he came in. That's when the Harrahann LLC was formed in Harrahann. All the centers had their own boards at one time. And Al Robishow came in, and he got rid of all the boards. Well, West Wigo and Harrahann continued with their own boards. West Wigo, what Al Robishow did when he came into JCOA, he took all the monies away from all the boards. Every board in Jefferson Parish had their own funds. Mary had their own funds, Ratna, West Wigo, Lafitte, all the boards had their own funds. Well, they came in and took all the funds. Well, West Wigo and Harrahann, well, they took, West Wigo, they took Harrahann's funds, but Harrahann went and formed their own corporation, and they gave the funds back to us. Well, West Wigo did the same thing. They took their funds back from, from the JCOA. The funds Harrahann had gotten taken back, they spent on the seniors. They bought tables, they bought chairs, they bought new fans. This is over the years I'm talking about. We're not talking about the last three or four years, we're talking about over the years they've spent the money in the senior center. Harrahann LLC, they have raised money over the years through Adelaide's Mall. They've raised money, and they've, they've bought things.
So, I believe that's Harrahann Senior Center, Inc., correct? Not Harrahann LLC?
That's the same thing.
Oh, yeah.
It's not?
No. Yeah, I mean, I just want to be clear, so, last time they were talking about LLCs, and I didn't know what they were talking about, but what you're talking about basically is Harrahann Senior Center, Inc.
I'm not, I'm talking about Lo, Richard's group.
No, no, no. Harrahann Sen-
Come up, Richard.
I'm supposed to come up there.
I just want to make sure we on the same thing.
Yeah, please.
For you to public understand, I know me and you know we talking about the same thing, but I want the public to-
Harrahann Senior Center Incorporated is the group we formed to get the money back.
Right.
Okay? The people that were here last month kept saying Kidock's LLC, Kidock's LLC, so I just want to correct you.
Well, I'm talking about Harrahann, well, I thought it was Harrahann LLC. What's it called now?
No, it's not an LLC, it's incorporated. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
Okay.
Can't have an LLC that's a nonprofit.
Well, we talking about the same group. It's just, I said-
I just wanted to view it publicly, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I said the wrong name.
And if y'all don't mind, when you finish, Sandy's here, so maybe she can address y'all.
Okay, that'd be good.
And I'd like to thank all the seniors that came out and supported us.
But this, this thing started many years ago with the, with the bickering among the two boards. And when Al Robishow took the money from the seniors, not only Harrahann, all the other senior boards, Harrahann got their money back. And over the years, we've spent the money. I served on that board for a few years, and then I got off of it. Rich, how many years ago I got off? But maybe, I was on the Jefferson Parish Council when I got off the board. What, eight?
It's called LLC, uh, gee.
Oh, my gosh.
It's called Incorporated Nonprofit in 2012.
Okay, and I was on Jefferson Parish Council. I served maybe a year, and I got off the board. And, and they worked with Lynn for a while, she's the coordinator over there, but somehow or another, things got off-center, and, and they didn't work together well with Lynn. Lynn started fighting them. And that's where all the problems started up. All I can say is I don't want to stand here and start saying he, she, it, what, but they've had problems over the years. The Richard Kidock's board, I don't want to say the wrong name, they're working for the seniors. They do a lot for the seniors. They have meetings every month for the seniors, they have luncheons, they have Free Friday Fun Luncheons, every-
Harrahann Senior-
Free Food Fun Friday.
Senior Center, Inc. They do a lot for the seniors. They have fun, they do a lot. I mean, they always say that they don't do nothing for the seniors, but that's not true.
I've been involved with them for years. Like I said, I served on the community center for many, many years, since, what, 32 years ago? I started on that board back in 92. So I've been on that board a long time. And I just wanted, I wasn't gonna say nothing tonight, I wanted to keep my mouth shut, but I gotta say that you guys do a good job. And I want to thank you and Tim and your board for what you do for the, for the seniors. Y'all do a lot. And also Sandy's got involved. Sandy's got involved, and she's keeping y'all, you know, she's keeping the book straight, and y'all doing, you know, y'all doing a good job. So, you know, just continue it, and, and look, guys, I know y'all getting, y'all got these people over there, certain people over at the senior center fighting you guys, trying to make y'all look bad, you know, but just keep the fight up, you know, don't give up. I know y'all want to sometimes just throw your towel in and say, but y'all love the seniors. I know your heart's in the right place, and the seniors love you guys. So just keep what you're doing, and I know I'm gonna support you, and I'm pretty sure this council and this mayor's gonna continue supporting y'all. So just continue what y'all doing. Yeah? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Miss Sandy, you can come up and talk. Might as well stay on, we'll stay on topic. You have two seconds? No, I'm just messing. I'm just messing with you.
I'm sorry for being late. The contractors didn't realize we had a rental.
That's okay.
And Alliance for Good Governments, so I had to clean and move tables and clear up and everything, so I'm gonna be real quick. I have a packet, and my prayers are with Councilman Asbill and Councilman-
Ricks.
Ricks. I know they're going through some family issues.
You wanna pick those?
Could you keep one for them outside? Chief. I just wanted to clear up some questions that was spoken at the last council meeting. My name's Sandy Lamoin, 43 Berkeley. And the property was donated by Marrero Land Company on December 27th, 1983, under the administration of Mayor Carlo Ferrero. And it's for a senior care facility for the use and benefit of the citizens of Harrahann. Page four on what I gave you, I gave you a copy of that. List of four conditions that must be abided by, or the property with all the improvements would revert back to the donors. I didn't know if you guys had a copy of it, but a question was posed as who controls the senior center, the city or the LLC? And do we have a private entity running the center? No. The city owns the property, the city controls it. One of them said if the seniors can't use the center, then it's no longer a center. The seniors are still using it. We had, have an average of 60 to 80 seniors using it for the events. We still have events, we still have rentals. It's closed temporarily for the repairs during the daytime hours. Someone asked about the pro bono attorney, for the power of attorneys, the living wills, and income tax. They're welcome to rent it, they just have to call me and see if it's available and they can use the facility. They will never turn down.
We've just told them that they could use City Hall if that happens.
Yeah, but I mean, they can still use the center.
You said no charge.
Use it, correct, correct. I'm saying rent it because right now, I'm keeping the rentals right now, and so, so of course, we wouldn't charge them anything. Another lady asked about the light of marquee for the bingo. The contractor has agreed to donate us a very large screen TV to use for that. So I just wanted you guys to know, all the money collected for the rentals have been accounted for, turned into the city and signed for. I know the mayor stated that. The copies of all of that, though, are in your packet, so you have proof of that. We're currently doing a study to see what the event rental facilities are getting and what we can now offer once it's renovated, what we can get for it. And I'd like to work with the council people. I was excited to hear that Buddy and, and Ricks are gonna be involved to do a new COA, and whoever wants, it's not, it's not just us. Mayor Baudier worked on a campaign of Harrahann United, and we really want to unite with you guys. We don't want to be long-range, just doing something out there. We want to make it the best senior center in Louisiana, and I think it will be. The, the mayor has done a job that I think surpasses any mayor that's ever done as far as getting the money for us. You guys know how much they got for us, I don't have to reiterate that. But they go, he got quite a bit, and even in the last meeting when he went to Washington, he got even more for us. He was able to get money for our windows and our doors, which was something we wanted, but we just didn't have it in, in the budget and the monies that we had. Right now, I spoke to the HVAC contractor, he's having the metal fabricated, that should be done. He said within the next two weeks, we should have all of that replaced. The contractor said that we should have everything done in 90 days, and if you go look over there right now, a tremendous amount of work was done even since yesterday. What was holding us up was JCOA had a lot of their items still in the way, which was cleared out today. Thank you, Mayor. He was able to get a crew out to move it out. And I also have in there a copy for you, Mr. Buddy, to work with Ricks, of the previous cooperative endeavor agreements, and you can see what, what was in there, what was given and what was being provided. And you'll see when you look at that, all of the things that HSC actually did provide and has provided, and will continue to provide. We just want to do what we can for the seniors. They want to do what they can for the seniors. I was gonna go into, but I know it's late, I was gonna go into how I ended up getting involved. If y'all want to know, I'll be happy to let you know.
I begged you, basically?
Yeah. The mayor, the mayor, you know, was really frustrated with the two groups fighting, and he asked, could you please come be a peacemaker, see what you can do? It was really frustrating for everybody. And so I got involved, and one of the questions that I was gonna address was that one of the seniors said, how can one citizen come in and take over? I didn't come in and take over. I have a business I'm running, I'm really busy. But I came in to help. And if I can be a help and a blessing to you guys, and a blessing to the seniors, that's what I want. That's what I want to do. I don't make a dime off of it. None of those volunteers make a dime off of what we do, but we want to help this city to become successful. And so I'm, I'm happy to work with you guys. There's a lot in that packet, I'm not gonna go into all of that, but you can see, every dime collected is turned in. I work with Cherie very well. She used to handle the rentals, she's so relieved she doesn't have to handle the rentals anymore. Every penny is turned in, and you'll see copies of that where she, where she signed for it. I also have a calendar of all of our 2024 rentals. And so we have rentals all the way through December, but we can't charge the new rates yet because of the condition that the buildings, and like right now, they're working amongst construction. The last people were working amongst HVAC system that wasn't working. So, but once it's there, and we find out what the rental rates, instead of getting $50 or $100, we may be able to get $1,000 or $2,500. We don't know, we doing our study right now. And we'd like to bring that to you guys, let you guys help us in determining, you know, how much you want us to rent it for, and make some money so that the seniors always have money in the pot to support what they need. Once the building's done, then they can support, you know, pay for other things. So that's all I want to say right now. I'm not gonna go through everything. Why don't you look at your packets, if you have any questions for me, y'all know how to reach me. And thank you again for all your time.
Thank you, man. Thanks. Great to hear.
Whenever any of you guys get a chance to thank Sandy Lamoin, please do, because she has been sent from heaven to come help me kinda really rein in the senior center and kinda really make it, we have a, we both have a vision, and we're very simpatico on the vision, and the vision is to make it the best senior center in the state of Louisiana. We want it accredited, but that's gonna take some work, some time, and it's gonna take money. And I know that people are concerned about that aspect of it, but in order to fix it, we need to be able to make it an economic driver. And so Sandy and I, not, not doing senior center event hours or function hours, but in the evening, you know, we, to have a vacant building just sitting there that could be making money doesn't make sense, and it doesn't make financial sense for sure. And so what we're gonna do with that building in the evening is rent it out as a, as a reception hall, or whatever we can do as an event center, or even to conventions or whatever. And that money will all come back to the city, and it will go into the senior center, the senior center budget. And so that money will, you know, be able to use to always give you guys what you need, and, and I've gotten, you know, I've spent some time over there, and I really started to get a good understanding and a very emotional understanding, especially with Ms. Virginia Carecka, who was my girlfriend, and I will miss her very much, what it really means to you guys, you know, and, and it's so important, and for me to learn that lesson, and it's so important for you guys, and for some of you guys, I know that's kind of really all you have. I want to make sure as a mayor that I'm leaving you the best product that I possibly can get, and I think you guys deserve the best, because if it wouldn't be for you guys, I mean, we wouldn't be here today. That's just the way it is. And we love you guys, and I know it may not seem, you know, seeing the forest through the trees may be difficult some days, but there is light at the end of the tunnel, and we are gonna keep pushing to make it the best that it possibly can be. So I'm excited about it, I think it has an incredible future. We're actually asking for more money than what we've already gotten so far. We have something called a capital outlay request in with the state to try to get more money. Right now, the state's having a heavy push to actually fortify its senior centers and community. And so we think it's got a good chance of really making it through the process, and it is a process. And you gotta get it through the House, you gotta get it through the Senate. First of all, you gotta get it out of committee, then you gotta get it through the House, you gotta get it through the Senate, then you gotta get it out of conference committee, and then you gotta get it signed off the governor's desk. And that takes a, a good bit of time and a good bit of work, and, and that's why I'm in Baton Rouge, and a lot of people say, well, why you in Baton Rouge? Well, why I'm in Baton Rouge is because so far Baton Rouge and our state legislation has pretty much sent about $10 million to this city so far. And this session is the biggest ask that we've ever asked. Last session, we got 4.5 million to redo our entire sewer infrastructure and take our sewer plant back at the city control, and put our sewer plant in, you know, up to date standing and not be as antiquated as it, it is. The next one will come in, we'll be working to do some street repair, and then get you guys into the best senior center that you possibly can be in. And so that, that's our goal and our mission. It's gonna take a lot of work, I'll be in Baton Rouge quite a bit from March till June. And so if, if you call me and I don't answer right away, I will call you back, but I'm gonna be up there lobbying with everything I got for you guys and, and some other projects. But that's it for that, and, and I do want to touch on some of the other projects and things that we've been working on. Myself and my chief of staff, we've been really trying to work, we work with other mayors throughout the state, and you know, trying to put interest in our city, and, and as you guys can see, the city's in pretty great shape. I mean, almost every house I approve now that we're building is million-dollar homes. I mean, we're, the, the property value here in the city has, has grown exponentially and pretty fast, and more than I've ever seen it before. And so what we've been doing is we've been really becoming unique and trying to tell our story. What makes unique Harrahann so unique, and why should you come here, and, and what's our history? And so that's what we've been kinda doing. So what we've been doing is we've been really supporting our, our fallen heroes, and we've really been trying to honor our fallen heroes, and I don't know if you guys know the personal story of Charlie Zarang, who actually is the reason why I'm sitting here today. I ran for office the first time and lost. Mr. Charlie was actually wiring my building at my t-shirt shop, and he said, ma'am, why don't you run again? And I said, ma'am, I don't want nothing to do with that world, it's, it's too much for me. And, and he said, no, I think you'd be a great, I think you'd be a great asset to the city of Harrahann. Let me help you. And Mr. Charlie Zarang and Mr. Jacques Berg actually got me back in the game and, and helped me move, and helped me get elected through other, and, and some other work. And so what happened, so Zarang Park came along, and you know, we've been always talking about it, and I really don't think a lot of people know why the park is named Zarang. And, and with our youth right now, so engaged with what's happening in the world with, with Ukraine and Russia, and with the Middle East, you know, Israel and Palestine, I said, you know, we came up with this idea, you know, why don't we use the interest that so many of people are interested, especially our youth right now? Let's use it now, and let's grab them, and let's talk about our history. And so that's how we started to really build our story to tell. Not only is it incredible to be able to honor our fallen heroes, but it's incredible, incredible to start really inventing a story to tell, to make Harrahann, you know, really recognizable. What is Harrahann there for? What are you doing? And, and we have, and you know, we have become a beacon for small cities in the state of Louisiana. I mean, I, I have relationships with everyone, every congressman and senator in the state, every state, almost every state representative and every senator, every senator at the state level as well. And, and, but we've really been, Harrahann's really moving at a rapid rate of speed, and we've become such a success story that people want to be a part of that. And so it's been, you know, it's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, a lot of bureaucracy even for me, but it's been fun to, it's been fun to do it, and it's been fun for people to come along and, and help. And guys, I can work with anybody. I mean, I work with John Bell, he helped me with a lot of stuff. I'm gonna work with Governor Landry and his staff, he's gonna help us with a lot of stuff. Lieutenant Governor actually loves the city of Harrahann, he's been here quite often. And Congressman Scalise has been here. We're even inviting Congressman Troy Carter. But we've been really doing, is working with the foreign embassies, and so we went to DC, we went to Monti-Grau, DC, which we believe is the networking event of a lifetime. We don't believe it, we know it. The fruit that gets buried from there is just insane of what we, what we able to come back with, the relationships or, or, or much. And I'd just like to read through a little bit of them. We recently signed our first sister city program, the first time Harrahann's ever had a sister city program with Lyric Quebec, Canada. And we're actually using international commerce, and their town sits on a river just like ours. So we're using that as a bridge to build that gap with the international city program. They'll be visiting in late March, and, and like I said, we have our sister city here. We're working with the council general from, from Canada, which is, she's been incredible. And then we also had, we also are finalists in a grant from Canadian National Railroad. We've been working with the French ambassador. He's visit, he's visiting New Orleans, oh, this is the French ambassador visiting New Orleans next month. He's not coming to Harrahann, but we invited to go meet with him. Our sister city program in, in France is Saint-Ovoils and that's where Felix Zarang is buried. And so that's the networking that we're trying to build together. In the Philippines, Thomas Paccone is, is, is interned and Lionel Vicner is memorialized in the Milan American Cemetery. The Minister Council General introduced us to Rojas and a sister city program partnership. So we're actually working on a sister city partnership right now with the Philippines. And as we started doing work, trying to figure out our relationship with the Philippines, there's a lot of Philippine people that are actually very close to us and a lot of our culture and a lot of our food and everything was actually created by the Philippines because they came in here way before America was America and started, and, and started a lot of the fishing industry that we know today. And in Belgium, in Belgium, we have, we're working with an artist, his name's, it's a really weird name, but it's Jean, Jean Dumalaster. And what he does is he's actually from Belgium, but he paints art of small towns in southeast Louisiana. And so they, they've taken a great interest in us. And the crazy part is, is that, I'm trying to look and make sure I got the name right. Jules Haydel, like of the Haydel family is actually built, is actually buried in Belgium. And, and the crazy part is when we went to, got to go meet him, we tried to tell him, you know, this is the Haydel that's related to our Haydells that make king cake. And so we told him, they're like, no, we the first one to make king cake. No, 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 we made king cake first. Well, come to find out, they've been making king cake for about 200 more years longer than us. And so I have to really give them that. And then this week I'll be heading up to Louisiana Municipal Association, again, trying to get and, you know, learn from other mayors on what they've done better than me and maybe teach other mayors on what I've done better than them. And so I'll be there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. And then we'll come back from that. And then I'll head up to the Mississippi Rivers Cities and Towns Initiative back in DC. And what that is, it's a city, it's cities that all, that cater all the way along the Mississippi, all the way through the country. And I'll be a moderator on a couple of events on, on disaster recovery. And the, the point being there and, and what I'm hoping, and I'll get a chance to start it, I won't finish it in my, in my time, but we think that the river has, is, has a lot, a lot of ability to become an economic driver for the city of Harrahann. We're working right now with some groups, we're trying to put some kind of economic driver back there. We want to do national security and we want to do some environmental studies back there as well, as well as maybe put an economic driver back there of maybe a restaurant or something like that to maybe we can get a, a stop on the Viking cruise that comes through every Sunday. But it's about, it, it takes money to, to, to get us to where we want to be. It takes money to, to give us the life that we think we deserve and the quality of life that we think we deserve here. And, and so that's what we've been trying to do. And, and even me and the council prior to me have always been trying to get out and, and get creative and inventive to not have, always have to come to you guys for money. So we get out and we try to invent new ways, but we know the river is, is unique and we don't, we don't exploit it nowhere near as, as much as we should. It doesn't touch us to where it's going to impact us in any great way, shape or form, but economically it could really make a difference in, in the city. And, you know, so we, and we're going to start really, you'll start to see some real construction on Zarang Park real soon. The plan is, is to take it and put water culverts underneath it, to take that flooding out from B Avenue right there. And so what it's going to do is it's going to put water culverts on there and that water culprit will create a greenway, which will come back and it'll recirculate that water and it'll become self-sustainable. And, and from there, we'll put a little travel barn type of situation there at some point to where our farmer market, our farmer's market has a place to go. If you don't go visit the farmer's market, it's incredible and it's doing incredible and, and, and we really love having that. And then we trying to make it a focal point of the city of Harrahann. You know, a lot of, when people come to Harrahann, most of the time what they see first is Hickory. It's been such, it's been quite a challenge to try to clean it up and it has, it ebbs and, it ebbs and flows, but we're working hard every day to try to make that, you know, a, a great entry point for when people come in and see our city for the first time. And so we have a lot going on, a lot of things are moving. I know you see a lot moving in the streets right now. We're closing in ditches, we cutting, we trimming trees, you know, we're, we're constantly moving, trying to make things better. We're working on two streets right now, Monroe and Resort. We're going to be doing an entire flood study all back of Huntley, Halsey, Wainwright, that entire area, just to make sure when we fill in all of the ditches and Colonial does come completely online, that we won't be flooding anybody's home. So there's a lot, you know, there's a lot, it's sometimes it's a lot of infrastructure, a lot of things that you guys won't see. Rebuilding lift stations, make sure they're working properly, going to get grant funding for that, taking the sewer plant back under city control, which saves you guys $40,000 a month. We've done that. And so it's just, it's a lot of work and, and I don't get up here and talk about it a lot very much because people ask me, well, why don't you talk about everything you've done all the time? And I tell everybody, if I spend all the time talking about everything I've done, then I won't be doing anything. I mean, you guys voted for me for a reason and that's for me to get out and get the job done. And that's what I try to go do. But I thank you guys and I want to thank Sandy very much for all the work that she's put into the senior center. I know the senior center's definitely had some, some peaks and valleys, but we'll get there. I promise you we will. And, and I'm going to give you everything I got to make sure we make it the best senior center in the state of Louisiana. So thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I amend the agenda.
Yes, we have a motion by Councilman Chatelain to amend the agenda.
I'd like to bring up proposed order, it's 2024-6 from the floor.
Okay, so we have a motion from, for Councilman Azbile, second by, second by Councilman Buddy, to, to bring a proposed amendment from the floor. All in favor?
Yea.
Yep, three yays, two absents.
Add a 2024-6.
Madam Clerk, please add 2024-6 to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes, reading of the minutes of the council meeting on December 21st, 2023.
Okay, do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the council meeting on December 1st, 2020, December 21st, 2023? We have a motion by Councilman Chatelain, second by Councilman Buddy, to dispense with the reading of the minutes. All in favor?
Yea.
Three yays, two absent.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on December 21st, 2023.
We have a motion by Councilman Chatelain to approve those minutes from December 21st, 2023 meeting. We have a second by Councilman Buddy to approve those minutes. All in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Ms. Paul?
Yea.
All right, three yays, two absent. Madam Clerk?
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on January 18th, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Chatelain, a second by Councilman Buddy, to dispense with the reading of the minutes from January 18th, 2024. That's council meeting minutes. I have a second by Councilman Buddy. All in favor?
Yea.
You have three yays, two absent.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on January 18th, 2024.
So we have a motion by Councilman Az, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Chatelain to approve those minutes. We have a second by Councilman Buddy to approve those minutes. All in favor?
Yea.
Three yays, two absent. Madam Clerk?
We have no communications, resolutions, proposed resolution 2024-2. The following resolution was offered by Councilman Chatelain, a resolution to declare a public emergency to take necessary emergency actions in regards to the city's aging sewer infrastructure.
Mayor, I'd like to amend this resolution as well. After speaking with the city attorney, we decided we should remove lines 17 through 22.
Okay.
Take it out.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Chatelain to remove line 17 through 20, 17 to 22 on proposed resolution 2024-2. All in favor?
Can we pause for just a minute?
Yes.
I can't find my copy of that. I must borrow something. I have it. I saw it earlier today.
Okay. Does it change from that? Okay, is that 2024-?
Two.
Oh, two. I got six.
It should be in your packet.
So what are the, what's the proposed amendment, Councilman?
We're going to remove lines 17 through 22. We're going to remove lines 35 through 37.
17, hold on, 17 to 32?
22.
22. And then what's, what next?
35 through 37. And then we're going to add on line 41 wastewater treatment facilities. We're going to add in is a public emergency. We're going to add that between facility and is.
You're going to add?
Is a public emergency and?
Is a public emergency. And, okay?
And then we're going to continue on is a danger of failing below standards set forth by state. I'd like to do all of them amendments. I have mine hot. Line down if you want to.
No, just fine. I think I got it.
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah. Yes, sir. You take out executive sessions. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Chatelain to amend proposed resolution 2024-2 as stated, second by Councilman Buddy. All in favor?
Yea.
Yea.
Three yays, two absent. Most, proposed resolution is amended. Okay, now we're going to do, we're going to open for public hearing. Anyone wanting to come speak on proposed resolution 2024-2 as amended? No one coming forward. Will now close public hearing. Counsel discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, if you would, could you give a little recap of what we're doing and what it's going to cost and the urgency of these repairs? Are we getting more than one bid and just a little?
So the only, the only people that have this equipment is this one company that it's called a Rolex piece of equipment. And what's happening is, is that through the last rain event, we wasn't able to, we were, so what happened, so right now we don't have a sludge processing system. Let's start there. We don't have a sludge processing system. So what happens is come towards the end of the month, our, our, our system is at a high level already. Well, if we catch a rain coming towards the end of the month before the beginning of the month turns over, what we're doing now is we're hauling our sludge away from an 18-wheeler. We're only doing it once a month. It's costing us $14,000, 14, or 12, $14,000 a month to do that. This will, this will do two things for us. One, it will actually give us that capacity to keep that sludge processing on a 24/7 basis to where we always processing our sludge to, to dump it. And then that's, that delivery process will now become 2,000 instead of 14,000. It'll save us $12,000 a month for the next 10 months. And, and so it will give us the ability to increase capacity. But, so I'm, I'm, so I'm very transparent in what I'm saying here. This is a, we are still moving forward with the centrifugation system. So we will have two processing systems because we do believe when Colonial comes online that we need to be able to make sure, one, we have a backup because there will be no room for failure when we add all of them toilets. And number two is that we can constantly have that capacity at the level that it needs to be, just in case we have these thousand-year rainstorms that we're having pretty much every other week. And what really brought it to my attention is the last storm we had, we were out and we were driving the street in the rain and there were manholes, literally sewer manholes, literally hovering inches above the ground because we just didn't, we, we were just backflowing. It was, had so much back pressure because we were so charged, the system was so charged.
If we get the physical sludge out, it adds so many cubic gallons, you know, the volume to the system and it's going to handle a lot more process easier.
And the reason to all, and so also as declaring this emergency starts to really put the ball in a state's court to start to move a little quicker on that four and a half million. It's all been approved, it's even been approved through the bond commission. It's just, you know, you have a new governor coming in right now, so you got to re-educate the entire staff on where we are and what we were doing. But this puts that stamp of emergency right back behind it because now it's no different than when someone says, hey, you got, we got a tree in our front yard, it's on city property, it branches about the, well, now we've been on notice. Well, no different than that, we're now telling the state, hey, listen, we're in an emergency state right now. We need, we need moving on this money.
So this is declaring the emergency, this isn't authorizing you to spend any money? We're going to do that separately or?
No, that's, that's actually declared in that, it's the dollar figure.
Part of, yeah. There's a dollar figure. No, that's going to be in the ordinance.
I'm sorry. All right, good.
The dollar figure's in the ordinance.
And that's the ordinance we did for first reading tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And thank you for that explanation, Mayor.
Just so the public understands, the sewer plant, when we go to the state and we looking for money from the sewer plant, we've been band-aiding the sewer plant so much, we're not falling under violations. If we were falling, falling under violations, they would have shelled us money earlier on. But since we're band-aiding and getting it patched and doing what we could do so we don't get penalized from DEQ, it actually hurt us. If we would have had these flags, they would have approved this money through this other process. I mean, we've actually went there, sat with them. I mean, you came a couple of times and, um, over the last year, few years, and they basically saying, guys, y'all not failing, y'all don't have enough fines, you know, like if we would have failed and let it crash, they act like they would have gave us money pretty quick. But we got penalized for band-aiding it.
Let no good deed go unspun.
Exactly. So now we going through this process and we're having a lot of luck and we're getting in the right directions in the right hands and I think they're going to hand us the full million dollars.
Yeah, four and a half. So it's just a matter of trying to put a sense of urgency in there, put that ball in there.
It was a timely, timely process.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so is, Mr. Paul, do you have anything?
No, I'm listening.
Okay, so we're going to vote on proposed resolution 2024-2 as amended. All in favor?
Yea.
Three yays, two absent. Madam Clerk?
Okay, proposed resolution 2024-3 was going to be proposed by Councilman Azbile, but he asked if we could defer it since he's not here and I didn't get it in time to put in the packet.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Buddy to defer proposed ordinance number 2024-3. All in favor?
Yea.
Three yays, two absent. Madam Clerk, motion, proposed ordinance resolution 2024-2 is deferred.
Okay. Ordinances for approval, proposed ordinance number 2023-35. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Azbile and seconded by Councilman Chatelain, an ordinance to adopt the new city of Harrahann employee handbook, non-silver service, which will supersede ordinance 1361 and all subsequent amendments.
I think a motion is to defer.
I'd like, I'd like to discuss for just a moment if we can.
Sure.
I volunteered to review the document. It's 50 some odd pages. I made it to page 40, or 44, something like that. I've got a lot of comments and my plan would be to sit down possibly next week with the Harrahann employees who have had a hand in it. And I understand it would be you and Samantha, Cherry and Samantha, and the individual, the consultant contractor who prepared it.
Okay.
And walk through and just ask some questions, maybe tweak it, maybe make some changes, maybe not. But it's moving.
You just want to clarify some things.
Yeah, and, and there are some things in there that, that, that actually give me a little bit of heartburn. For instance, if an employee, if an employee got the maximum amount of days of paid leave that they could get, it could happen, be 96 days of paid leave, which is 37% of a normal worker. There's some things in here that I think may be excessive, but I want to ask where this came from. Was it benchmarked? Is this what other people are doing? We need to be competitive. I can say it, it's very generous.
And actually more lessened. There was a lot more lessened.
Yeah, I lessened it.
Yeah, but I, you know, again, there's got to be a reasonable basis for it. I just want to ask the questions and listen to the answers.
Yeah, because we've had some walk away with that 96 days. I believe Edwin had 96 days, did he not? Yeah, Mr. Edwin had 120.
Now this, yeah, this is, this is what they could take in one year, vacation. This is not a crude walk away with.
They never had a vacation.
It's, 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 so anyway, that's some of the things what I, you know, that might be a little bit more than a tweak, that might be a modification.
I love it.
And it might not. Having talked to the people who put the document together, look at their rationale.
I will second that motion.
All right, so a motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Chatelain to, to defer to defer proposed ordinance 2023-35. We're now open for public hearing. No one coming forth, we're now close public hearing. All in favor?
Yay.
Three yays, two absences. Madam Clerk?
Okay, ordinance is for introduction, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Ricks, proposed ordinance number 2024-1, an ordinance providing that the Harahan Municipal Code be supplemented to fix the amount of compensation of the elected public officials of the City of Harahan as required by Louisiana Revised Statute 33401.1. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain, proposed ordinance 2024-2, an ordinance amending ordinance number 1990, excuse me, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, for the ARPA Fund of the City of Harahan, Louisiana, for street repair of Monroe Street. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain, proposed ordinance 2024-3, an ordinance amending ordinance number 1990, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, for the ARPA Fund of the City of Harahan, Louisiana, street repair Resort Avenue. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain, proposed ordinance 2024-4, an ordinance authorizing the allocation of capital funds for the emergency purchase of a new dewatering system for the wastewater treatment facility. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain, proposed ordinance number 2024-5, an ordinance amending ordinance number 1990, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, for the Capital Project Fund of the City of Harahan, Louisiana, City Hall Trim Lights. Proposed ordinance, I'm sorry, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Chatelain, proposed ordinance number 2024-6, an ordinance declaring a public emergency in connection with an emergency repair of the city's antiquated sewer collection system and ratifying an additional expenditure estimated to be approximately $161,062 of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Old business, old business number one, planning and zoning board appointment.
I don't think, I think we're going to defer, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Unless any of y'all have any, we have none at this time?
No.
We'll defer.
Okay, new business, new business number one, Todd Turney on Finance Director, monthly financials.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brief update from the finance team. Sales tax amounts continue to be, uh, be, uh, received each month, and they're within the current budget estimates, and we make those transfers to the appropriate funds. Some of it goes to, to, to the, some of the different funds, including the, the FIRE sales tax fund. We are working on closing out the year end. The auditors actually did some work last week or the week before, uh, right before Mardi Gras, and we're working on closing out the year end in preparation for the audit process. We have updated some of the budget schedules based on the budget that was approved at the December meeting, so we'll get those, um, updated schedules out tomorrow and send those out for the council members to start looking at. That's all we had, um, for the brief update this evening. Have to answer any, any questions that the council members may have.
Only question I have, I'd like to set a meeting up with you next week to go over the sewer plant. Uh, I'm still not happy with the increase in the sewer fees that we're having. We're doubling the sewer fees on the citizens starting in July. Is that what we said, July?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'd like to talk with you because I think we're increasing too much on the citizens, and I want you to explain to me why we need increase to sewer fees so much. So I'd like to set a meeting with you next week.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, new business number two, approval of 2024 Philfest 5K on April 6th, 2024. I think Jason had all the information on that.
Which one are you on?
Philfest.
Okay, Philfest. Well, I know Philfest, I know if you ran Philfest, the emails are coming out now for you to re-register. Um, I don't know the exact email, but I'm sure if you search Philfest on, on a thing, I'm, yeah, I'm sure if you search Philfest, you'll come up and be able to register. Last late year was an incredible turnout, I ran it. Um, we'd love to double that venue this year, so if you would love to come out, I'm, we'd love to have you run Philfest, I believe it's going to kick, take the same route, which actually started at St. Rita, went up Western, went up Imperial Woods, oh, no, what, yeah, went up Imperial Woods, correct? To the levee, we went down to somewhere, it felt like China, and then we came all the way back, and then we finished at St. Rita, and it was the fabulous time, but running a 5K without training last year was pretty difficult. I think I'll be in better shape this year. Uh, but we'd love to have everyone, please come out to Philfest, uh, and go online and find it. If you have any questions, call City Hall tomorrow or call me personally on my cell phone, and I'll make sure I get you the link. Uh, this is a great event, it's great for our city, and it's a lot of fun and a great way to, to really promote, uh, getting healthy and, and, and doing something good as a community.
And Mayor, the return from the, the levee was back down Imperial Woods?
Yes, sir. Right, right to St. Rita, yes, sir.
So I was out of town, and I'm really upset, I hope I'm here this year because I'm going to challenge the man a race.
Oh, you ain't beat me, buddy.
I'm going to come watch.
I'm like Gump, I can run.
I can.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Do you need to do anything on that?
Uh, let's go, so what, yeah, Phil, Philfest, yeah, let's approve it.
I mean, we just need to make sure he's got okay with the police to make sure they have, my head is covered.
You moved that thing?
Can we approve a contingent?
Yeah, we can approve a contingent.
Y'all touch that thing under there? Because he said we need to touch it, that's why it makes that noise. We might have to push it back.
What is it?
The whole thing.
All right, we're not making noise. We good?
Yeah. Somebody must have moved it. It pulls the cord tight and then it moves that out.
Yeah, as, as long as the police have lined up and.
Yeah, but we'll make it happen.
Okay, so Police Chief says he'll make it happen. We're now open for public hearing, anyone want to speak on, uh, new business number two, Philfest? Uh, no one coming forth, we're now close public hearing. All in favor to approve Philfest?
Well, do you want to put contingent on satisfaction of the police chief?
Yes, sir, contingent on satisfaction of the police chief. Um, if that's the only way we'll get the approval, and we'll go all in favor?
Yay.
Three yays, two absences. I'm excited about it. Thank you, thank you, Council.
New business number three, Serge Villanova, Fourth Annual Harahan Music Festival. Request for an event permit and a temporary alcohol license.
Good evening, everyone. Serge Villanova, 53 Renpass Avenue, local musician, president of Stranded South Music Media and Events, as well as the founder and director of the Harahan Music Festival and Food Drive, coming back around for its fourth year in 2024, this upcoming June. Uh, today I'm requesting an event permit for the Fourth Annual Music Festival, requesting a temporary alcohol license, and I'm requesting formal permission to rent Sonnet Park per the man, uh, per, per the rules of the Harahan Recreation Department. Rob Chung, uh, owner of the camp, will be helping facilitate alcohol sales, beer, beer only. So we'll have everything, uh, we'll have professional bartenders out there who will be licensed and will be fully insured, continuing, continuing with our mission of providing bold and exciting entertainment experiences for the hard-working residents of Harahan and the greater New Orleans residents. This year, we will be striving to move our event, uh, from Zerang Park to Sonnet Park. The first three years, we've had it at Zerang Park. Last year, we were more than ecstatic to welcome over 500 people throughout the day. They spent over $5,000 while enjoying over five musical, music acts, and last year's festival had an economic impact of over $25,000 for Harahan and the surrounding areas. Um, the music festival is a little more than a music event. We launch numerous community and betterment initiatives leveraging the festival, uh, using music as the foundation. Since we started the event in 2021, under Mayor Bodier's administration, uh, we've raised over 10,000 items of food for the St. Rita Food Pantry, we've helped revital, revitalize Zerang Park, uh, utilizing our network of partners, including Home Depot. Uh, we've helped renovate a Hurricane Ida battered park shelter at Zerang Park. Last year, we assisted the Kingfish Boxing Camp and after-school boxing camp, uh, produced their very first boxing tournament in the City of Harahan. I believe that was the first boxing event in Harahan in over a decade, um, all while entertaining the hard-working residents, uh, with world-class Grammy Award-winning, homegrown Louisiana talent. Also, last year, we assisted the VFW in attaining a $5,000 Home Depot Community Impact Grant from Home Depot. With that, they bought a brand-new John Deere riding lawnmower. That lawnmower is currently being used to assist the elderly, elderly and disabled veterans in the area, and we couldn't have done any of this without the assistance, hands-on assistance of Mayor Bodier and the council, um, including Councilman Jason Asbell and Councilman Eric Chatelain. Thank you all very much. We've traditionally called the City of Harahan a sponsor, um, as it is a great example of the safe and vibrant nature of the city, and we'd love to call the City of Harahan a presenter once again this year. This year's poster will be based on an original artwork by, uh, local artist Mike Tru titled, uh, The Shrimper's Sunrise. I think that's a very beautiful painting, and, uh, please, uh, together, let's set sail on the Fourth Annual Harahan Music Festival and Food Drive.
Thank you, sir. For you guys who, who've missed the, the, uh, the festival, it is something spectacular. It is getting better and better every year. I mean, we have so much fun. Uh, Lost By You Ramblers were there, and, um, and I had just begun, uh, my journey in speaking French, I'm in, I just finished my second semester of learning French, and, um, but I don't know what language I was speaking because I had been drinking by that time, so it sounded like French to me, and they were kind of understanding what I was saying, and, uh, we just had the time of our life, and, and it was awesome. You got to come out, you got to see it, it's getting bigger and bigger. This year, we're moving it to the, to Harahan Playground, uh, we, Sonnet, but we're moving it to Harahan. It'll be so much fun, guys. Come on out, come, come enjoy the community and fellowship, and come see the great talent that Serge brings. He puts on a first-class event, and we are certainly proud to have him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just to be clear, I do know the city council members individually sponsored the money to help you.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it wasn't money from the city.
Absolutely not.
It was actually individual sponsorship from all of us.
Yes.
And I think it was the, the police chief and the mayor also.
Yeah, I'm saying, it was from everybody individually.
The elected official.
We all committed sponsorships, and hopefully we can do the same this year.
Yes.
Thank you for considering that.
It wasn't city money spent on it.
Yeah, yeah, just, just, just keeping the books clean.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Serge. You good?
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk? Oh, so we're going to vote, are you ready?
Wait, wait, uh, again, let's just, you know, modify this if we can, subject to satisfaction of the Chief of Police, and put a date in there, June 1st, 2024.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, sir. Okay, we're going to amend new business number three, adding, uh, subject to the approval of the Police Chief, and adding the date of June 1st. Uh, we have a motion by Councilman Buddy, seconded by Councilman Chatelain, all in favor to amend new business number three. We'll open, we'll open for public hearing. No one coming forth, we'll close public hearing. All in favor?
Yay.
Yep, three yays, two absences. Madam Clerk? And then we're going to approve new business number three.
I do have one question on number three, will we approve that? Uh, as, I mean, I know he's got the alcohol permit, temporary alcohol permit, as long as that's approved through the state, I don't, I don't know what.
He's using Rob Chung.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's a cater permit, it's approved through the state, we fine.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we usually do, like Jason and him will sit down and they usually do a CEA before the actual event.
And Mayor, I understand you, uh, have a cooperative endeavor agreement we've used in the past with insurance requirements.
Correct. Great, it's correct.
So we'll pretty much repeat that.
Yes, sir. You got it. All right, we have a motion, uh, by Councilman Chatelain, seconded by Councilman Buddy to approve new business number three, Serge Villanova, Fourth Annual Harahan Musical Fest. All in favor as amended?
Yay.
Three yays, two, an absent, Madam Clerk, is approved.
Okay, new business number four, high and low content ABO application for J E L Partners LLP, doing business as Cafe Karib Nola, located at 7,335 Jefferson Highway for Jesus Chinchilla and Lorena Barrera.
Chief, do you have a chance to look into this one?
Yeah. Assistant Chief Americo had, uh, reviewed it and, uh, signed off on it, so it's good.
So we're open for public hearing, anyone who wants to speak on new business number four, ABO application, um, no one coming forth, we're now close public hearing, um, council discussion.
Long as it fits our guidelines and the chief approves it.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Yay.
Three yays, two absences. Madam Clerk?
Secretary's Report, Secretary's Report for January 2024. Total revenues, $1,576,896.08. Reports.
All right, reports. Chief, look free.
Um, just real quick on the department. Um, last, um, last month, we handled 409 calls for service, 14 accidents in the city, 43 citations were issued, we received 15 patrol requests, and 152 patrol requests and resident checks serviced. Uh, we had the, um, traffic enforcement of 58, um, miscellaneous arrests was 38, miscellaneous charges were 51, we had two felonies, 27 misdemeanors, 17 city arrests, five traffic, four narcotic arrests and, uh, city charges. We had two non-residential burglaries, we had one-vehicle burglary, um, we had a motor vehicle theft, and that motor vehicle theft was also involved with the, uh, car burglary. Identity thefts, we had, uh, one, and, uh, intent to defraud, uh, identity thefts, we had four. There's, uh, several scams going around. Uh, we posted on the app to be careful receiving phone calls. Uh, one resident, after we put it out on the app, actually called us, and the scammer was still on the phone when the unit got there. And, uh, so the gentleman put the officer on the phone, we identified ourselves as the Harahan Police Department, and we got a quick dial tone, he hung up. So there is a scam going around. I believe the Sheriff's Office also put out a notice to be careful on these scams that are going around. Uh, so if you get a call that's suspicious, if you get a call from somebody saying they're from the police department, we're never going to ask you over the phone for your information. We're going to send you a letter, or we'll send you something, a subpoena or a document by a official law enforcement officer to your residence to issue any kind of request. Uh, talking about the, uh, requests and all, I'd encourage everybody to go online still. The app has been tremendous. The response we're getting from the app is just, it's, it's remarkable. Uh, we've requested, uh, a new part of the app, requesting that, uh, folks that have cameras in the city, register the camera with us. We're not monitoring your camera, we're not, we're looking at your camera. All we're asking for is tell us if you have a camera on your residence, on your business. If something happens, we can go right to that, uh, download that we have, this list of residents, and call and ask the resident, please check your camera from this time to this time on this date, and see if you see the description of a car or something that we give you, or if you see something that's abnormal. Uh, with the app, the camera registry has been tremendous. Um, when you have time, we can actually show you the city map where all the cameras are registered throughout the city. Uh, we're getting a lot of patrol requests that are coming on, people on vacation, people out of town, they send us the patrol request, we get them right, right there. Uh, traffic complaints, we've gotten a couple of traffic complaints, and we've sent the officers out to those areas. Um, I'd like to be doing more traffic, but right now we're just, um, a little short-handed, but that's being corrected. Uh, tomorrow, we have an officer graduating from the Police Academy, Zach Lamar, Lemire, uh, a new, uh, officer, uh, found out today, he passed the post test, so he graduates tomorrow morning, I'll issue him his, uh, post certificate. Uh, he was attending the, uh, Kenner Police Department Academy. I appreciate Chief Conley allowing us to have him in the academy, uh, and it, it didn't cost us, so that was a good thing. Uh, we have another officer, uh, Logan Barlow, he's been in the academy, this is week seven now, he's in the St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office Academy. We should have him coming out sometime in May. Uh, so that'll be two new officers that, um, will be working the streets of the City of Harahan. We also just hired a, another gentleman, a gentleman Johnny Nunes, he's retired military, just came back from Afghanistan, and he wanted to be, uh, Harahan policeman. So, he wanted to serve the community, he came and applied, uh, we've hired him, he's working as a dispatcher at this point. We're hoping to be able to send him to the academy. Kenner's having another academy that starts in April, we're hoping to get him through that academy, and we're building our ranks. We have several other applications of folks that are applying, and, uh, we're doing background checks now to, uh, make sure they can, uh, meet the standard that we're trying to set with the Harahan Police Department. Uh, our new vehicles are in, uh, with the timeline of getting things shipped, we're still waiting for our light bars and the cages to go in the units. So as soon as we get those, uh, those new units will be on, on the street. Uh, anybody wants to go in the back, you can see them, they're parked along the fence.
That's all.
Um, I can't say enough about the flock system, camera system. We had an incident the other night, a resident came out, gentleman was by the car, um, he yelled at the gentleman, the gentleman took off, we were able through the flock system and the cameras that were registered with the department, we were able to get the description of the car, identify through the flock system, the license plate on the car, and we know where the gentleman lives, we're just waiting for the warrant to be, uh, served on that gentleman.
And the flock system is a rec, license plate recognition?
License plate recognition, yes.
So that's how they track them? When that license plate hits that next camera, we're watching the man, he's going.
I think last month, we approved money to get, we approved some money to get some?
I don't, uh.
We approved all the stuff from the parish, that was what we approved.
The parish is what we approved.
Yeah, so, that, that flock system is just a tremendous asset for all law enforcement. I mean, we're working close with Jefferson Parish and all the surrounding agencies that have them, and, uh, it's just been a tremendous asset. We had a, at 5:44 this afternoon, we had a stolen vehicle hit the camera dock in Dickory. A little red vehicle, Hyundai, that was, uh, stolen. Training classes for officers, um, I'm trying to get, is, all the officers into training, I thank Kenner again, uh, we have a couple of officers that are in a FTO training, uh, class, they've been in that for the last three days, and they'll be coming out. We have two officers that are in Scott, Louisiana, right now, at a officer survival training class, and when these officers receive this training, they're coming back to the department.
Chief, what is FTO?
Field Training Officer. And, uh, so when these officers come back, they come back with the knowledge that they've learned to be able to train and give the information to the other, uh, officers. I just got a notice today, too, from the EOC. The, uh, there was a UASI, uh, grant and a SHU ship grant, which is the State Homeland Security Grant Programs. Uh, in 2021, there was some funding that, uh, was sitting there, and we were able to use that funding to get six new radios for the department, and we were able to get five new bulletproof vests for the, uh, for officers. Um, the 23 grant, uh, was just approved and signed off by the, uh, Homeland Security and GOSEP. Uh, we will be obtaining a new camera system for City Hall and the Police Department, uh, some other equipment that is coming for, uh, for the Police Department, and it's all coming through grants. We're not having to ask the public for funding, it's coming through these grants that we're applying for, and, uh, our partners that we're working with the other agencies have been really great, working with me and, uh, working with the city to, uh, help us get this equipment that we need. So, um, we're moving forward, we are having incidents that are happening in the city. I'll just touch briefly, we did have a drive-by shooting on Oak. We were able to retrieve seven, uh, .40 caliber, uh, bullet casings that was shot. We were able to receive, uh, retrieve, not receive, retrieve, uh, a handful of, um, bullets that went into a resident on Oak, and we were able to recover those, those case, those casings and bullets are now with the Sheriff's Office and lab, being analyzed to see if we can try to track the person that, uh, was responsible. I'll tell you, it was a red, small, um, one of these small, compact vehicles with heavy tinted windows, so we were able to track that through cameras, and it exited the city, uh, through Air Hard Expressway, so. So the guys are working hard. We have a good police department, we got a good reserve division. Guys are coming out, helping fill in the gaps for us while we're needing the help. And we're moving forward and trying to bring the city to keep us safe as we've always been. So I appreciate everybody's time. If anybody has questions, let me know.
Chief, if you had 15 more flock cameras, your chances of catching that drive-by shooter would be more likely to catch that guy?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Chief, did traffic citations fall off your report?
Yes. By the gentleman that I have work in traffic, since we lost another officer to another agency because of pay, we had to take him off of traffic and have him respond to other calls and as a backup unit, handling situation calls. But yes, I saw that, and I'm not happy with it, but I have to respond to other calls for emergency before I sit and just do traffic.
The other officers, when they see someone speeding, they don't write a ticket? Or is it just that somebody assigned to traffic?
No, all the officers are, they're supposed to be out there enforcing traffic. I wrote a ticket today.
One for February.
No, actually, it was two violations.
Two for February. Thank you, Chief.
I see, but in your race.
Like I say, I encourage them to be out there enforcing the traffic laws, and there's other methods that we can use, but we can talk about them as it comes about.
Mr. Buddy, I think, as your question is, I mean, when you had someone on traffic, they were basically sitting there shooting radar, looking for traffic. Basically, he doesn't have someone to sit there and shoot radar. They're basically riding the city. But if they do see someone speeding or doing something, they do stop them as well.
Can we just add that line back into your monthly report, whatever it is, the number of citations?
Yeah, the citation, it's, we, they wrote 43.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I missed it.
It was so small, you missed it.
Yep. Well, yes. And I'd also like to compliment you on the app. I've been using it and getting alerts, and, you know, I think it's a very useful tool, and I'd encourage all citizens to get it. It doesn't cost anything, it's an easy download, and the chief is advising us of road blockages, anything that comes to his attention is hitting that report, anything that comes to the police department's attention. So if you don't have it, get it. I think he'll appreciate it.
If the city, if the mayor or somebody, if you have something that you need to get out, it's available to all city departments that we could push out.
Like, we have emergency ball water advisory, we could say, Chief, can you blast this?
Yeah.
So anything like that. A chemical leak, anything like that, he could blast it out.
Well, we put out this morning about the phone outage. We wanted people to know.
Yeah, I got it as soon as my phone came back on.
Oh, did you? Some phones went out, mine stayed on, my son's didn't, my wife's didn't, but some did, some didn't. I don't, I'm not sure, but we want to let everybody know that landlines, and if you were on a Wi-Fi, the number was operating into headquarters. Because of the new phone system we put in, when I took over last year, it's an IP over voice. So as long as we have Wi-Fi, the phones are going to work. It's not like it's hooked into, you know, anything specific. So as long as I don't lose the Wi-Fi, the phones will work. And we just wanted the public to know we were, we were there if they needed us.
And we do notify Chief every time there's going to be some kind of road construction. We do know, we notify him, so that's, we notify him, and he pushes out for us. That's awesome.
Again, the app's working just fine.
But the app's available to all departments, any agencies from the city of Harahan.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Buddy?
No report.
Councilman Chaddeling?
Guys, I just want to announce, this Friday, the 23rd, St. Rita's Dad's Club will have the fish fry from 5:00 to 8:00. It's normally a good turnout, show up early, might have a little line. Hopefully, they got it moving fast. They do have a new lineup. I think they're coming from River Road towards Jefferson Highway on Ray Van, is the way they're doing it now. Also, the Eighth Annual Miracle Beauty Crawfish Cook-Off down at the camp is on April 7th from 1:00 to 6:00. You can go on Facebook, look up Miracle Beauty. I believe they have a Facebook page. They're limiting their tickets to 400 tickets. So if you're interested in going, you need to buy your tickets early, because they will sell out. Other than that, everybody have a good weekend.
Does the fish fry at St. Rita sell out? Does it sell out normally? Usually, in the first week, though, it kind of gets real close.
They won't sell out on the first week, because they have enough, because I'm sure they have another one scheduled in two weeks.
All right.
So, yeah, I don't think they're going to...
I'm just trying to get people to get over there.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to run out.
They might run out, so you better hurry.
It's good. I think they have a couple other specials, too, maybe a pasta or something to have this meet, this week as well.
Yep.
That's tomorrow, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman, are you done?
Done.
Councilman Johnson?
Who's putting up the food truck regulations? Who's?
This is something, we're not putting it up, this was something that I just gave you, you guys, because I knew you'd all be here. It's something that we, HAA talked to me about it one time, was doing a little food truck festival, and then we've had a couple of incidences where we had food trucks just kind of pop up in the city. And so we really want to start to fortify our laws on that, if we're going to allow it, if we're not going to allow it, and if we are going to allow it, there's going to be a permitting process involved in it. And so I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it tonight, because I was going to talk about that. But, yeah, at some point, I mean, we'd like to do something like that. We'd like to have a little food truck event, be kind of neat. HAA brought it to my attention years ago. I thought it'd be kind of fun, something new, interesting, you know, and maybe you have, I don't know, some entertainment out there or something. It'd be kind of neat.
Right, like if we go to a playground, get like five food vendors show up, get, you know, a little music playing out there, you know, every other month.
I have no problem with that, but I wouldn't want to see a food vendor park a vendor machine, a truck over there by the bowling alley, by a wagon or something. I wouldn't want to see that.
The problem is, we just have...
As far as having it at the bowling alley, I mean, at the park...
We just had that today. We had, we had one today in code enforcement.
Couple days in a row.
Where they parked at?
They went to Jefferson Highway, and then they went down on Hickory.
Yesterday was on Hickory today.
They parked in a hill be ham lot, that's when we caught wind of it yesterday, and we started digging in, and today, they were actually parked on Hickory. So we're going to address it, but today, they were parked in a business's parking lot, which allowed it. And so I met with the business owner today, talked to him about it, and said, hey, look, you know, we're working on a permitting process, we're going to have something together really quick. As soon as we have it in place, you're going to have to follow, you know, permit regulations.
And we don't want to run them off, but we need them to follow the process, make sure we get our tax dollars, and make sure they follow the border health rules.
Right.
I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, I want to have them down at my place, you know, but we got to follow the rules.
And it's kind of true.
Right now, we have no rules in place.
It's kind of trendy, Joe's Lobster Rolls, this guy sells out, these are lobster rolls. I've never had one, because every time I make a day, he sold out. But he sells out of, he and Anthony had them down there a while back. But we just want to make sure that we, you know, we crossing every T, dotting every I. There's another thing I'm thinking we're going to be working on soon, really, all grass cutters here. We're not, we really, I don't know if we're going to put a permanent process in place for them, but we want to know who they are. So they will have to probably come get some kind of free permit or something from the City Hall at some point. We are going to start cracking down on that, because we just, you know, with everything going on today, I mean, we live in strange times. You know, we should know who's in our city and who's not.
And anybody pass out any magazines or knocking on doors, they should be coming to City Hall and get a permit.
Exactly, exactly.
Because I, a little story here, real quick. When I was mayor, they had a group of people that was out in the streets knocking on doors, and people called City Hall. We sent them out there. They brought two people in, and y'all have the machine over there that runs all over the country? I mean, I don't know if you still have it. And they had a guy that they brought in there, they ran him, he was warned for murder in Chicago.
Geez.
And that's, and they, we got to make sure that people have permits to go knock on doors and stuff like that.
We just want to know who's in our city.
That's back 15, back in '08, something like that.
Well, I'm going to tell you, we've had that just recently, but we don't allow it. We find, we see you knocking on doors, you're taken out of the city. We took people out of the city already.
We've received calls on that.
There's no soliciting, no soliciting.
That's right.
We've addressed them.
That's what we should be doing. But like I said, we did it, but they had to come to City Hall and have a badge and everything on their shirt, you know. But real quick, what I wanted to mention is, my condolences goes out to the Vic Neff family. Donnie Vic Neff Jr. passed away today at 4:30, Fox's grandson. So I wanted to mention that today and to tell the family we're very sorry for their loss. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Sorry for your loss, Mr. Fox. So Mr. Paul touched on food trucks, which is really cool, and I think it's just a trendy thing that we ought to, we're going to certainly take a look at. Certainly, we're going to do it with council approval. If anyone has any points of clarity or any, anything in favor of or against, please contact City Hall, let us know. There's also something that we're going to talk to, you know, we're going to work on, and this is not the greatest of news, but we are certainly going to start enforcing our demo, our demo policy. There's a lot of properties in the city of Harahan that need to be demoed or fixed. And so we really, in time, it's taken me some time, and we're really working with hard with building a code enforcement department that has the strength that we needed to have. And this council has supported me in it, and it's been wonderful for us to do it as a team. Our code enforcement department has now become with, we've just invested a lot of money in technology. Everything we have is now digital, and we can see everything, every step of the way, every case that's on, in progress, where it's at, if it's been settled, if they're in contempt. It's all thing, and we actually have a map that the council and myself can view at any time. The demo process is going to be something that we're really going to start kicking in. So if you have a property that needs to be cleaned up, man, I've been asking you for months and months and months to clean it up. We're really going to start really pressing and enforcing the law here. So I really wish, you know, if you, and if you need some help, please contact us, you know. I've always believed this government has one purpose, and you voted for us for a reason, and that is to come help you when you need help. That's what you voted us here for, that is our job, and that's what we're supposed to do. So call us, and if we can help you in any way, shape, or form, and you're just not so neglect of the law that we can get out and help you, we certainly will. And one last thing, I wanted to, tonight, I want to formally endorse Britt Baudier for Jefferson Parish. She's studying for, I mean, she's actually running for Republican State Central Committee and a Jefferson Parish Republican Executive Committee. We talk so very much about our younger community getting involved, and to see someone as close to me as she is getting involved, it really warms my heart. I don't know why she wants to do it, but I think it's great, it's incredible to see some of our young community wanting to get involved and actually, you know, and get involved in a process and really understand. So I'm going to ask you guys to vote for her on March 23rd. She's a little modest, and she didn't talk about kind of who she is.[1667.22]